Welcome to the December 2nd meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Sean Wright has our prayer and our pledge.
I bow your heads. Thank you Heavenly Father for being all the blessings you bestow on our community. Be with those that have spoken our unspoken needs. Please keep, remind us of what this season is really about so we can glorify you and make the decisions we need to make. It is in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, is, I want to, is Alan here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hey, Alan, if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium. Typically, it's hard to single out a lot of the people who retire within the city because we don't get to see them on Thursday nights. But for, for quite some time, Alan has been working at City Hall. Alan's been at most every one of our council members. And tonight is Alan's last meeting as a Murfreesboro City Officer. He is retiring tomorrow. Alan, how long have you been with the city?
Since June 22nd of 1994. So, every many years, I knew you were going to ask the years and I was like, 27, 28.
Yeah, long time. So, Alan, I just wanted to, I've had the opportunity not only to, to serve with you here at the city, but I know many of you, many of us who are here have had the opportunity to go and pray with you. And you've been through a lot this past year with everything that you've worked through medically and backed well, but I want to let you know how much we appreciate you, how much we appreciate your service, how much we appreciate you protecting City Hall and the residents of Murfreesboro, and we're really going to miss you.
Thank you.
All right, on your consent agenda, item two has been pulled off of the consent agenda. So you have items 1, 3, 4, and 5 that are on your consent agenda for tonight.
We move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have old business, you have ordinance 21OZ31 zoning for property located along Franklin Road, and this is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into new business. You have a plan of services annexation and zoning for property located north of Dejarnet Lane.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. The property that we have before us tonight, there are two public hearings on, there's an annexation request and a zoning request. We'll handle the annexation first, and we'll get up and give you some more information on the zoning after the annexation public hearing. You'll see it's the area in the purple color on the map before you. It is the rear portion of the Calvary Baptist Church property along the north side of Dejarnet Lane. It's about 15.6 acres. Walton Lane, which is in the Bradford Place subdivision stubs into the property right now, and it's directly to the south of the Hampton subdivision. Calvary Baptist Church has submitted a petition for annexation of this property, and there is a zoning request for future development of, of a portion of this, of this property requested to be annexed. The plan of services has been included in the agenda materials. You'll see that it's, it's contiguous with the existing city limits on its north, south, and west sides. City services are already in the area, and city services can be extended to this property very easily upon annexation. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on October the 13th and voted to recommend approval of the annexation and plan of services to the city council at that meeting. As I mentioned, we'll have additional detail in the next presentation on the zoning, but for right now, the request is regarding the annexation and the plan of services, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we need to hold a public hearing, and this is just for the plan of services, which means whether the city can provide services and then also for the annexation, which is just that the city, that it could be annexed, so this is not for the zoning. If you're wishing to speak, if you'll come to the podium, you have three minutes as an individual, five minutes as a, if you're representing a group, if you'll keep all comments directed to the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing from staff. Anyone wishing to speak on the plan of services, please, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider Resolution 21RPS34 for the plan of services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You now have Resolution 21R834, and this is for the annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I'm going to go ahead and, Matthew, before you start publicly state that plan of services and annexation are routine, but I'm going to defer on the zoning on this, or excuse me, I'm going to abstain. My kids go to PCA, and so I don't think it's appropriate for me to take part in the discussion.
All right, thank you, Mayor McFarland. The companion zoning request is actually kind of threefold. You'll see on the map before you, there are three colors on the map. It's for a portion of the Calvary Baptist Church property that is already located in the city limits. That's the blue area, and that is, that property is zoned RS-15. Calvary Baptist Church is on its property by special use permit in the RS-15 zone. So that area is requested to be zoned to PND, which is Planned Institutional Development. The red area is Planned Institutional Development simultaneous with annexation. So the red and the green area on the map is the area that's being considered for annexation. And the green area will be, will come in with an interim zoning classification of RS-15. The church wishes to retain the green area and, for possible future development, but they really don't have any, any concrete plans for the green area, they just want to hold on to it. So the area colored in green will stay with Calvary Baptist Church and will keep a zoning of RS-15, which would be the automatic zoning classification if it is annexed. The area in the red and the blue is all a part of the Providence Christian Academy Athletic Facilities PND request, and that stands for Planned Institutional Development. That is a planned development that is for an institutional use, like a school or a church or the like. The surrounding land uses, as I mentioned earlier, north of the subject property is the Hampton subdivision, which is zoned RS-12, single-family residential, minimum lot sizes of 12,000 square feet. To the west of the subject property is the Bradford Place subdivision, which is zoned PUD, Planned Unit District. Those lots are a little bit smaller than the Hamptons, and they are part of a planned development because there is a significant amount of open space and common area in that development. It's kind of, kind of a cluster-type development. In between the Bradford Place subdivision and the subject property is a smaller subdivision containing four lots, two of which are flag lots, but they're kind of larger lots zoned RS-15. And Calvary Baptist Church, the existing Calvary Baptist Church facilities are located directly to the south of the PND request. You'll see, it is right there in the circle. To the east of the subject property is an undeveloped tract that I believe has a, one single-family residence on it. It's located in the unincorporated county. Now Providence Christian Academy, their existing school facilities and athletic facilities are located to the south across Dejarnet Lane from Calvary Baptist Church, and it is zoned RS-15. The request is for a PND zone for the construction and development of Providence Christian Academy's athletic facilities. This construction will be done, if it's approved, in four phases, and the pattern book that accompanies the zoning plan details the layout, the access points, the architecture of the buildings. I won't go into a great deal of detail because Mr. Matt Taylor, representing Providence Christian Academy, will be going over those details with you momentarily. I will say that the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on October the 13th and voted to recommend approval to the city council, subject to several items being addressed prior to city council. One of those were some additional provisions regarding noise abatement being put in. Mr. Taylor will go over those with you in just a moment, but there are a number of bullet pointed items that they are committing to do to, to help to mitigate any noise impact to the adjacent residential neighborhood. Also is a commitment to have a full traffic impact study prior to Phase Four. And Phase Four, which is the last phase in the development, will include the football stadium, which will hold 1,600 spectators. That obviously will be the, the use on the site that will, that will generate the most amount of traffic, and they are committing to having a full traffic impact study, which will yield recommendations for, for potential improvements before the, before the site plan is reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission for Phase Four. Of course, with each phase, the applicants would be required to submit a site plan to the Planning Commission for approval. So with that being said, I'd be, I'd like to invite Mr. Matt Taylor to make a presentation on this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Blimley, Mayor, members of the council, Matt Taylor of SCC. I've also got Ms. Katrina Keller of PCA with me as well. We do have a brief presentation to go over what we've looked forward to being the new athletic home for Providence Christian Academy. PCA has been very popular, has seen tremendous growth over the very, over the past few years, and that's due to their academic program as well as their athletic offerings. That has made them realize they need to start to offer a complete athletic program. Today, the athletics that they do offer are spread across the city. They play basketball and soccer at their school across the street from here. They play tennis over on Old Fort, and they play baseball up at the Sportscom. So they, they want to gather a home, create an atmosphere, create a destination for their patrons, their students, and those parents. Today, the site's about 19 acres on the north side of Dejarnet, directly behind Calvary Baptist Church and at the end of Walton Lane. On this map here, Dejarnet is in the east-west direction, kind of the purple line. Walton would be the same direction, but the red line, Alexander would be in yellow, and then the school's current campus is in blue on the south side of Dejarnet. The site's zoned, a mix of RS-15 and RM in the county, and then we've got good access to water and sewer at a couple of different locations on Walton, as well as within the parking lot or the remaining property of Calvary Baptist Church. In addition, the site generally drains from the north and the south toward the central part of our property, and then turns east and goes to Bear Branch. Couple of pictures, just to set, let you see what the surrounding area is. This is the front of the church facing Dejarnet. This is the school directly across the street. This is the property itself. Earlier this year, it was sowed in beans. This is a house on the north side of Walton, to the south of Walton, and then along Ormond, which is to the north and east of our proposed project area. The site plan itself, again, is about 19 acres. It offers a full offering of athletic facilities. We have located the football field surrounded by a track in the southeast corner of the property, which is furthest distance from homes as possible. We've located the baseball field in the northeast part, a shared soccer and softball field on the southwest corner, and then tennis in the northwest corner, which is the closest to the homes, but is the quietest and least used. In addition to those formal fields, we've got a scattering of buildings around the site. We've got a fieldhouse, batting cages, general storage. We've also got bathrooms and concessions. I think an important part of the plan is that the entire field complex itself is fully fenced, and that is to obviously protect our investment, but is also to deter our users and patrons from cutting, cutting across neighboring properties. In addition, we've got landscape buffering planned along the east, the west, and the north. We've also got birmingham planned along the north in an effort to mitigate noise and light, light. We've spent a lot of time on light pollution and lighting plan. Our proposed plan will meet the city's lighting ordinance for lighting values at the property line. We have requested a very specific exception on the light pole heights themselves for the fields. Obviously, we cannot light the fields with a 16 or a 20-foot tall pole, but we will meet the lighting values at the property line. Noise mitigation, we spent a decent amount of time on that at the Planning Commission. As Mr. Blimley said, we've outlined some very specific actions on page 12 inside the pattern book involving the direction of speakers on each field away from the homes, as well as mitigation or barrier efforts with the location of the buildings, berms, and landscaping along that west and north side. And then we've also considered doing, or committed to doing, a noise analysis once the football stadium is proposed, to utilize the best available technology there, so it's more directional and least impactful to the neighbors. In addition, we will be constructing new parking on our site here. We'll be constructing a limited amount of parking on the church's remaining property, and we will enter into a shared parking agreement with the church so we can utilize their parking in our heavy parking events, which would be mainly on Friday nights when their parking lot is very underutilized. So we think it's a good cohesive relationship. One important thing about this plan is all of our access is going to be from Dejarnet. We do construct a T-intersection and a turnaround on Walton, but that's going to be gated so that our patrons cannot use that. All of our patrons are going to come from Dejarnet, go through the existing Calvary Baptist Church property, and enter our property here. And then our hours of operation, we've committed to having all of our events over with by 10, except for on Friday nights when we've asked for 10:30, and that's purely due to the length and time of football games that would occur on Friday nights. The access plan, we spent a lot of time with staff on this, made quite a few improvements to improvements. First one of those are right-turn lanes on Dejarnet. So we're going to have two access points on Dejarnet. Those are existing today, and one of those will be installed with Phase One, which will be the most western side, which is shown here in blue. With that, we would construct a right-turn lane on Dejarnet at that entrance, and that would be for the, what we anticipate to be the tennis courts as part of Phase One, and it would come back and build a small parking lot toward the back, shown there in blue as well. And then with the final phase, which will be the football stadium, which is the largest traffic generator and parking demand, we construct another right-turn lane on the eastern access point that is on Dejarnet today as well. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the T-intersection and turnaround at the end of Walton would again be gated. Our patrons would not use that, and this would function as a more usable turnaround for emergency services and other delivery services that are functioning there today. As Mr. Blimley said during the annexation, the church is going to retain the approximate six northern acres shown here. They do not have any definitive plans that I'm aware of. The red line shown on this exhibit, as well as in the book, was requested by staff just to show that a functional access point and connection between Walton and Ormond was still possible with this plan for that interconnectivity in the future. We have also committed inside the book to a transportation demand management plan, and that really outlines how we're going to meet both the vehicular and pedestrian traffic demands during our larger events. Staff requested that we work on that and make some firm commitments so they can hold our feet to the fire later, so we've outlined those inside the book. Again, all of our required parking is on the north side of Dejarnet. Either we will build it, or it's already there today on the Calvary Baptist Church site. In addition, we will be widening the existing entrance, western entrance, the first 250 feet, so it allows for three lanes of access there to, that will be one exiting lane and two entering lanes to try to get the traffic off of Dejarnet faster. And then we have committed to a full traffic impact study at the time that the football field site plan is proposed. We do not know when that is, and so we felt like deferring that to a more definitive time in the future would be the most productive and the most accurate study possible. We plan for buffers, like I said, on the north, west, and east. The north side will also be accompanied by berms where there's not a building already today. And then, we've, we plan for extensive fencing, so the red on this exhibit is the perimeter security control fencing that I mentioned earlier. The yellow and the blue shown on this exhibit are much more functional to what that field is being used for, whether it's baseball or tennis or football. Lighting, we spent quite a bit of time on the front side with our lighting consultant to develop these plans. We are going to utilize LED directional lighting. Those are very effective at doing what they're supposed to, which is light the fields and keeping light off the neighbors. These are the same sorts of lights that are in use at Richard Siegel Soccer Complex, as well as at the new Cedarstone Park in Smyrna. The lower right-hand corner picture on this slide is actually the park in Smyrna. You can see the fields are very bright, those lighting values fall off very quickly. That's the same sort of technology we will utilize here. Architecture, worked with staff quite a bit on this. We have developed a very consistent building material palette, all masonry materials, all single-story buildings. And of course, these elevations will be refined at the site plan level, just like every project, and that's when we'll engage an architect, but we did want to set the standard and expectations through the zoning plan. The fieldhouse is really the main building on campus. It will be the central hub. It's located nearest Walton, so it's a very important building. This right here, this elevation faces south toward our smaller parking lot. You will see here some consistencies on this building, as well as the rest, on a stone base, brick, brick inlays. We try to use glass where we can, but you've got to think about what's on the other side of most of these walls. It's either bathrooms, somebody's throwing a baseball, hitting a baseball, something of that matter. So glass does not go very well with those uses, but we have tried to utilize it where we can. This elevation would face Walton, this would face the baseball field, and then this would face back toward the tennis courts. Concession stand, you'll see the same materials and design pattern. This is located on the central part of the property. Same for the ticket booth. And then the storage building is located to the north side. This will not only function for storage, but it will serve for noise mitigation along that northern side. It's a very long, skinny building. We've tried to break up that building plane with different materials and pilasters, and then the batting cage is of similar design to the storage building, just different dimensions. Now I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll now consider ordinance 21OZ35 on first reading. Excuse me, ordinance 21OZ34 on first reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright. Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Obstain. All right, we'll move to Plan of Services Annexation and Zoning for Property Located South of South Rutherford Boulevard.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is property that is owned by Husky Trust. See right here, here is the existing Husky Trust facility located along the south side of South Rutherford Boulevard. Husky actually owns that property, this property, and this long skinny property right there. That long skinny property is located in the unincorporated county. Both of their other parcels are located within the city limits and are zoned heavy industrial. The long skinny property that is the subject of this annexation request is a railroad spur line. It's not a, not a CSX property, but it's a spur line owned by Husky that comes off of the, off of the... that comes off of the CSX rideaway. Husky Trust is in the midst of doing some improvements on their property, and as I mentioned, they've acquired the property to the south across this strip of land. This property, the spur remains in the unincorporated county, and it is intended to be used, continue to be used as the spur line. They have no plans to change that. However, if you look at a zoom-in of the aerial photograph, you'll see that some of their, some of their storage areas are spilling onto this property. It's kind of blurring the lines between city and county, this parcel and that parcel. And so staff recommended that as they work towards making some improvements on their property, that they request annexation and zoning for this property. So the first public hearing will be on the annexation and zoning of this property. The Plan of Services indicates that we'll be able to provide services to this property. There'll be very, very little impact on city services considering that it's a railroad spur line. But nonetheless, we do need to have a public hearing on the annexation and Plan of Services. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I believe Mr. Austin Husky is here if you have any questions of the applicant. And then I'll give a separate presentation on the zoning in a few minutes.
All right, we need to conduct a public hearing for the Plan of Services and the annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider Resolution 21RPS35 for the Plan of Services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, Resolution 21RA35, and this is for the annexation.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we now will need to hear from Mr. Blomley and then conduct a public hearing to zone approximately 2.4 acres.
Yes, sir. This is the same property requesting to zone it heavy industrial. It is surrounded on both the north and south sides by heavy industrial zoning. Mr. Berriman's property is to the south and to the, and to the east of the subject property. You'll recall, a couple of years ago, it was zoned heavy industrial, and their existing facility and the southern container property to the north are both zoned heavy industrial. The 2035 Future Land Use Map recommends light industrial for the property, but considering that it is surrounded by heavy industrial zoning, in staff's opinion, the heavy industrial zoning makes sense, and this is a logical time to deviate from the recommendations of the Future Land Use Map. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this request on October 13th and recommended its approval. As I mentioned, Mr. Husky is in attendance if you have any questions for him, and I'll be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions? All right, I'll open the public hearing for this zoning request for 2.4 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading Ordinance 21OZ35.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to rezoning property along Bridge Avenue. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is, this is three properties, three parcels that are located along the south side of Bridge Avenue, in between New Salem Highway and South Malloy Lane. City Church has recently acquired these three parcels. The majority of these three parcels are zoned RS-10, single-family residential 10, and there's a very small area here that I've circled on the southern boundary of the largest parcel that is zoned heavy industrial. Churches are allowed by special use permit in the RS-10 zone. The applicants, considering the location on Bridge Avenue, have requested to zone their property to commercial fringe, where a church is permitted by right, as opposed to going to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit and leaving the RS-10 zoning. They're also requesting to, even though a church facility would be permitted in the heavy industrial zone, to rezone that heavy industrial portion of their property to commercial fringe as well. City Church would like to build their, build a new facility on the subject property. Staff has been in discussions with, with City Church and their design team on, on the design of that, of that facility. The surrounding land uses in the subject property, you can see there's RS-10. There are some single-family residential uses along the north side of Bridge Avenue, and there are several single-family residential uses on the subject property itself and on the south side. The ones that are on the subject property, the applicants are looking to repurpose for church office uses. The main church sanctuary building would be a brand-new building and would not be housed inside one of those, one of those existing structures. To the south of the subject property and to the, and to the southeast is zoned heavy industrial and there are a variety of light and heavy industrial uses located in that area. Directly to the east of the subject property was recently zoned PND, Planned Institutional Development, for the development of the city of Murfreesboro's new transit center. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map recommends that the subject property develop as general commercial. The zoning request to CF is consistent with the Murfreesboro 2035 Future Land Use Map. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on October the 13th and recommended its approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any. And I believe that Mr. Joey Ryan from Dow Smith is here, as is the pastor. Okay. And the, and a representative of Catalyst Design Group, a civil engineer on the project. So be happy to answer any questions, and they're here as well if you have any questions for them.
All right, any questions for Mr. Blomley? All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing to rezone this approximately 9.4 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading Ordinance 21OZ33.
Move for approval.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 11, rezoning a property along Franklin Road. Ms. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the Melton property located along the north side of Franklin Road. It's about 33.6 acres. And Mr. McKnight and I could tell you how many times we've met with folks over the years about this property, and so we're happy to finally see it moving forward. The property is zoned RS-15 currently, and we've seen a number of different ideas over the years about the, about how folks would like to develop this property. But Lennar Homes has the property under contract and is requesting that the front portion of the property be rezoned to commercial fringe for some commercial out parcel development directly along the highway. And the northern portion of the property, which, the majority of which is zoned RS-15, and the very northern portion is zoned RS-12 to RS-8, residential, single-family with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet. And so, you know, one of the things that, that staff had, had, had really worked hard to do was, was for there to be a good transitional residential use, preferably single-family residential detached as you transition back from the commercial along the highway back towards the existing single-family residential developments. And Lennar has agreed to develop single-family residential detached homes on the subject property on 8,000-square-foot lots. And you'll recall that earlier this year, the zoning ordinance was amended to require a minimum of 75% of brick, stone, or cementitious siding per facade in the RS-8 zone, much like the RS-6 zone, to prevent fire damage on adjacent structures. So, so there is a material requirement in the RS-8 zone as of several months ago, where there hadn't been one in years past. The surrounding land uses, as I mentioned, it's RS-12 to the north. That's the Blackman Oaks and the Blackman Oaks East subdivision. To the northwest is the Blackman Cove subdivision, which is PRD. Those are about 7,000 or 8,000 square-foot lots, I believe. And then to the east of the subject property is the Smith property, which Mr. McKnight and I have had a number of conversations with potential developers about that property as well. It wouldn't surprise me if at some point that property is before you as well. Any development to that property, we will, of course, with the development of the Melton property, make provisions for connections from the Melton to the Smith property for a good roadway network. Further to the east is the Victory Station Development, which is comprised of a variety of both residential and commercial uses. And along Franklin Road, there are some old residential uses in the county, as well as some newly developing commercial uses such as the Toots and a approved site plan for a new Tire World. You'll see that's that PCD directly across the street. Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on, oh, I didn't mention that the 2035 Comprehensive Plan recommends general commercial for this property. However, the, in staff's opinion, the depth of this property is not really conducive to the, the general commercial, the general commercial occupying the entire entirety of that property just due to the depth. We're not really seeing a whole lot of big-box type development anymore. So while the commercial fringe zoning is compatible, or is consistent with the 2035 Future Land Use Map, the RS-8 zone is not. Council will need to determine whether or not this is an appropriate instance to deviate from that Future Land Use Map. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on October the 13th and recommended its approval. And Mr. Kevin Gunther is here representing Lennar. If you have any, Kevin Gunther of Reagan Smith is here representing Lennar if you have any questions for him.
All right, any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll, we'll open a public hearing for the rezoning of approximately 33.6 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading Ordinance 21OZ36.
Quick question, real quick.
Got one, too.
All right, how many, I was not at the, at the planning commission meeting where this happened, so I'm sorry I'm starting a little bit from scratch, but how many of the, are there any developed, are there any houses built in here yet at all?
On, on the subject property? No, I think there are some agricultural outbuildings, if I'm not mistaken, but there are no, there are no residences on that property. I think there's a residence on the Smith property to the, to the east, but not on the Melton property.
While Rick's thinking, I've got one, too. So we're asking for straight zoning on this, and we don't have a plan, right? So is there a reason that we don't have a plan for this? Because I know there's been a lot of conversation in the past about having a plan rather than doing straight zoning. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Well, you know, you know, there are certain instances where a plan development is, you know, certain special instances where a plan development is seen as a good tool to, 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 you know, guarantee quality or, or a certain design or layout when, when it's, it's a particularly sensitive location. In this location, it, staff did not push for a plan development. We felt that bulk zoning at this location would be, would be appropriate.
And was there, and I know it's not included, but this is the basis for my question. The connectivity is not great in that area to Highway 96. I mean, I've been there a lot, done a lot of work over there. Is there a plan? In absence of a plan, my question is, is there going to be connectivity from there to Franklin Road? Of course, we don't, we don't know that, or I don't know that, so.
Yeah, Mr. Martin, you know, even as being bulk zoning, they still have to comply with our subdivision regulations. And so one of the things that our staff and our planning commission will be looking at is, is connectivity to the adjacent properties, and that's something that we've already been working with the applicant on. I think that they're going to hit the ground running in pretty short order and submit a preliminary plat with a layout for planning commission approval. They will be making the connection to Shore Drive right here. They're providing at least one connection over to the Smith property. Of course, the Smith property has the connection to Piccadilly right here. And then when the Smith and the Zacharia property develop, there is rideaway dedicated here at the southern portion of the Swanson property to provide for connectivity back to Fortress Boulevard. And when the Smith and the Zacharia property develop, there will also be a requirement to tie into that, to put a fourth leg into the Rucker Lane Franklin Road intersection. But, and of course, there will also be connectivity on their property down to Franklin Road as well.
So part of the reason I'm asking is there's been some dialogue recently where, in my short time on the council and sometime on the planning commission, there had been some consistency where we sort of always connect. Well, there's been some discussion of late where we're looking at saying, should we always connect on that? And so in my mind, if we don't have a plan where we know we're going to connect upfront during annexation and we're doing bulk zoning, then I think those are big questions that might come up after we've annexed and after we've gotten to a place where somebody can do something without knowing connectivity and how we're going to work that out. So I just mentioned that. I know it's an evolving process, and there's no one right way to do anything. It's just a comment, so.
I think, I think we will, as staff, enforce our subdivision regulations and, and make those types of recommendations to the planning commission when the, when the preliminary plat is submitted.
Thank you.
Sure. I'll have to apologize. I was there, I was just looking at the wrong screen. The screen here and the screen here didn't match, sorry. Gotcha.
All right, any other questions? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
No.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to the Plan of Services and Annexation for Rites of Way of Parkwood Drive, Woodcrest Drive, and Westbridge Drive.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. It's a little bit of an unusual request. This is for county rideaway only. It's a small 85-foot-long segment of Parkwood Drive, a 140-foot-long segment of Woodcrest Drive, and a 100-foot-long segment of Westbridge Drive. These are all rites of way that are in play with the Rivers Edge Section 5 subdivision. There will be lots in the city, well, actually, there are lots in the city that are currently being developed along these roadways. And whenever we have kind of an interplay between city and the county jurisdiction with a, with a subdivision and with public infrastructure, we work hand-in-hand with our counterparts at the, at the County Engineering Department. The county engineer had a preference to see these rites of way located within the jurisdiction of the city, because the, the developer of Rivers Edge Section 5 will be constructing improvements to these sections of rites of way, and there will be lots in the city subdivision that will be, that will be fronting on these sections of rideaway with driveways accessing these sections of rideaway. So Huddleston Steel, representing the developer, agreed to submit an, an annexation request on behalf of the, of the County Engineering Department. We did receive consent from the, from the County Road Board to move forward with the annexation of these rites of way. And so we bring these before you today at the request of the County Engineering Department so that Mr. McGuire of Huddleston Steel and his client can, can complete development of Rivers Edge Section 5. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on October the 13th and recommended its approval to the city council. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Chris McGuire with Huddleston Steel is here, representing his client, the developer. If you have any questions for them.
Any questions? All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing, hearing for this Plan of Services and Annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider Resolution 21RPS37 for the Plan of Services.
Move for approval.
Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we'll need to consider Resolution 21RA37 for the annexation.
Aye.
I see that Mr. Taylor has left us, he, I guess he didn't want to lend us his support
Mr. Shacklet?
for, for our revisions. But, but we did, we did send this out to him and to Mr. Bill Huddleston. They both gave us feedback and some, some modifications to it. So we feel pretty good about, about what we have bringing before you. As a reminder of the boundaries of the city core overlay district, it's bounded on the south side by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, on the west side by Middle Tennessee Boulevard, the north side by, by East Clark Boulevard, and on the west side by the, by the bottoms and going to the northwest by, over the Blue Coast area, Blue Coast Burrito area. I'm not sure if that's an actual direction or not, but everybody knows where Blue Coast The overlay district regulations are, as with any overlay district in our zoning ordinance, they overlay on top of our base zoning regulations and either provide for additional, more stringent regulations, or more lax regulations, depending on the fit for that particular area. And so a few of the changes that we've made with respect to the CCO regulations are, for parking, for example, we have had the experience of trying to accommodate various businesses over the last couple of years who have had some very difficult situations trying to locate in existing commercial locations. So what we tried to do on the commercial side is kind of make our parking regulate, parking requirements in the CCO a little bit more liberal. And so whereas we would allow a 25% reduction if there was on-street parking in front of a, in front of a development, or in front of, in front of a piece of property, we would now allow a 50% reduction in the number of required parking spaces. And whereas before, if there was a parking garage or a publicly available parking structure within 500 feet, we would allow a 50% reduction. We've changed that to a 75% reduction if there is a publicly available parking, parking facility within 750 feet, knowing that it's a, a more urban setting, people are willing to walk longer distances because it is a more walkable environment. Accessory apartments, accessory apartments are allowed by special use permit elsewhere in the city. Here in the CCO, they're allowed without a special use permit. So that is not changing, we're not rescinding that. But one of the things that we are adding, we are, after a review of our, of the CCO regulations, where the owner of the property was not required to live in one of the two dwelling units where there was an accessory apartment. Here, to be a truly accessory use, the owner of the property, we feel, should, should reside on the property, much the same way as areas outside of the CCO. Open space requirements, right now, our, our CCO regulations are a little bit, there's not much about open space in there. We kind of default back to how it is outside of the CCO. What we found is it's a little bit of a unique environment in the CCO, and we're talking about open space. And so what we, what we have proposed is a lesser required amount of open space in the, in the CCO, from 20% outside of the CCO to 15% in the CCO, and of course exempting areas in the central business district and one and two-family residential uses. Also, formal open space, that's, that's another thing that we've had a hard time pigeonholing, or shoehorning, I should say, formal open space in certain, you know, tight, compact developments in the CCO. And, you know, we had to ask ourselves, is, is formal open space really necessary when you have a four or five-unit residential development? And so what we have proposed is eliminating formal open space for, for, below a certain threshold. Even though we are eliminating formal open space for, I believe it's eight units or fewer, we are requiring private, like a private patio space, it would be required for residential developments that would be less than eight units. So rather than trying to put in a dog park on a five-unit development, we think that probably a more practical thing is to require a, a more private space for the resident. Another change that we're proposing is increasing the number of prohibited uses in the city core overlay district. What we really tried to do was use the historic bottoms and North Highland planning studies as a guide, and we noticed that there were a lot of uses that were not on the prohibited use list, that really weren't in concert with those two planning studies. A lot of industrial uses and, and other types of uses that just really didn't seem to fit based on the recommendations of those studies. So we've expanded the list of prohibited uses to include a number of industrial and heavier commercial type uses. So as I mentioned, we did reach out to our local engineering community. We've had two public hearings on this at the Planning Commission, one before the addition of the prohibited use, the additional prohibited uses, and then another one after we, after we added the prohibited uses. And the Planning Commission, at its October the 13th meeting, recommended approval of the, of this zoning ordinance amendment. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have one, Matthew. One, I like a lot of the changes that are made. I think they're very practical based on some of the discussions we've heard. Can you share any discussion? We had several developments that came through in the downtown area, where we talked about rooftop space qualifying as open space. Will you share any of the dialogue and discussion about that topic?
I will. So that was one of the things where, after the first public hearing, we actually went back and, and made some modifications to the regulations, the proposed regulations after that. I believe there were some concerns about, by the Planning Commission, about, about counting rooftop patios that were only available for an individual owner towards the formal open space. I think the, the feeling was that formal open space should be available for the, for the community that's being developed, not just for one person. So while that's not something that we would want to discourage, having, having rooftop patios, and I'm going to look over to Ms. Smith to confirm, I believe the only time that those could qualify as formal open space would be if they're available for the entire community. And she's nodding.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? All right, we need to, actually, we don't need a public hearing on this, we just are, what's that? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. Yes, we do need to hold a public hearing for this zoning ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Anyone, we have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Item 14, had a recommendation, this is the reconfiguration of the, of the Airport Commission. Had a recommendation, when staff had put this on the agenda today, to actually push this to the January workshop, but also see Mr. Ottman, who's there. Also, I think the recommendation was maybe as an overall conversation with a couple of the, I, I was looking back, remembering, after talking to Bill, that going all the way back to Williamson County, when we had our retreat at Williamson County, I think one of the top things that we all talked about was MTSU, and then our recent retreat, we talked about MTSU pretty significantly. So we, the recommendation had today was that maybe for the January retreat, Craig, that we would talk about this, but also invite Dr. McPhee and the board chair to come to take part in that, in that discussion.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. I, I wasn't willing necessarily recommended to move it to January, but I'm in favor of it, I'm good with it, and I'd love to see some representatives from MTSU there, too, for sure.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep.
All right, Craig, will you send, I know Mr. Ottman's here, but do you mind sending something out as a, as an invite? It may be good, you know, I was using this equation today that Dr. McPhee is the city manager of the university, and the board is the council, or the board of trustees is the council, much like Craig and us. And there's a lot of these discussions that it's tough for one individual of the council to take part in those and be able to get that correctly relayed back. So I think it'd be, it may be good in, you know, not just invite Chairman Smith, but invite the, the entire board of trustees, and if they want to attend, great, and it, I think the more, the more conversations, the better. So.
I hear that.
Can I ask a logistical question about January?
Sure.
Just as far as thinking about the MED process and kind of where we are in that and what, I mean, I suspect we'll be able to handle either in the December, we'll get some, probably some progress made in December, is that right? And then, or do we need, I guess what I'm asking is, do we need time in, at the January workshop, potentially, and I guess we could do that as well?
I think we probably could do, should do an update and then probably present a resolution if council's ready to move forward with it on this, the 17th.
Okay, cool, okay, perfect.
All right, Craig, if you'll get that out to us, that'd be great. All right, let's move on to item 15, which is the land exchange with Middle Tennessee Electric Membership Corporation. Craig?
This is a request for council to provide staff direction to commit city resources to the proposal to effectuate a land exchange. The city owns about 116 acres, close to 840 in Veterans, and one mile south of that, Middle Tennessee Electric owns about 150 acres, 120 of which is developable, that was planned for commercial development. City and, and Middle Tennessee's plans for those two properties have changed over time, and it appears to be advantageous for the city to, council to consider exchanging those two lands. Middle Tennessee has indicated that it's a concept that they're open to, to further discussions. From a city standpoint, it allows us a parcel of land that's more embedded within the communities for development of a park, which we've talked about on the west side for quite some time. And the city's currently owned property up on 840 in Veterans is prime for commercial development. It's the highest and best use up there. Middle Tennessee can certainly continue the economic development on, on that property, and they have strong connections with Tennessee, TVA, and Middle Tennessee Industrial Development Board that would be beneficial to apply towards that property as well. So council, if, with council's direction, we'll begin development of necessary documents and doing the due diligence that would be necessary, and then bring that, bring those back to council at a later date for council approval.
I wanted to give council just a little bit of background. I think I was meeting with Craig back in October, it was either September or October, and we were going over a couple of different things, including West Park, and so I just had the idea with Craig to say, well, hey, what if Middle Tennessee Electric's property was available? You know, if that were, if that property were available 10 years ago, when Mr. Murphy brought that through the zoning for their corporate headquarters, I just asked the question, would we have bought that property, knowing that it's surrounded by the largest subdivision in, in, in the Blackman area, Berkshire? Pretty sure that's the largest subdivision in the area, plus the cloister. And I think everyone agreed, hey, yeah, we would have bought that property, knowing that the 840 property was not really, the, you know, beggars couldn't be choosers at the time, so it was the best property we could find. So long story short, I called Chris Jones when I left that meeting and threw out the idea and said, hey, I know this is crazy, but would y'all consider this? You're surrounded by neighborhoods that I, in my opinion, I think would much rather see a park as opposed to a commercial development and a lay-down yard. And so then the next week, Mr. Tindall had asked, I, I think the, the school board had talked about sort of what their plans in the future were going to be, and this had not been shared with the school board and, or, or Mr. Duke, and they came back, and I think they had said that they were, they, their next growth area would be between Highway 96 and 840. So this property's between Highway 96 and 840. And so I think it gives us the opportunity, and everyone knows how hard it was for us to find the Salem Creek property. I mean, we almost had to go to court to be able to get that land, and there's just not land out there. So my opinion, I think it's a home run. I think it gets us out of the development business on having to sell land to individuals. I think that's best done for the private sector, but, and then this gives a, Brandon Witt has made a bunch of comments over the last couple of days since this has come out saying that he has farmed both properties and that this piece of property is much better suited for a park, and it's within walking distance with, of thousands of people who live in that area. So I think it's a no-brainer, it's no, we're getting more acreage for a park, and they can use our property to be able to do what they want to do commercially.
What, what kind of, as far as guidance would go, I mean, I assume, what, what are we looking for here? Either kind of a head nod, yeah, we want to kind of proceed with, with, with negotiations, or what, what's the result? I'm sorry, I kind of, if, if we proceed versus, obviously, the other side would just be, no, don't even proceed with it.
Right. I'm, nodding is fine, a voice vote would be better.
Okay. So, but the, but the voice vote would be on, hey, proceed with the swap?
No, 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 we would proceed with, right, to develop the terms, develop the documents, do due diligence on the property. Both properties are pretty well-known by both entities, but still, you'd want to do some due diligency in the interim if anything has come up on the property. So, no, it would be to, to really commit the resources, staff resources, to, to put that all together.
Yeah, I, perfect.
I'm sure there'd be some conversation about this, too, but I think we made some decisions about design guideline standards for adjacent parcels in that area based on there being a park there or being used for additional commercial uses. I mean, should we go back and reconsider that as a part of this if it's not going to be used for what we originally intended when we put that overlay?
On Veterans.
Yeah, on those additional properties. I mean, I, I think that should be reconsidered as well as a part of that, if we, if we do this, just to bring it up.
And I think, I think the applicants with those properties could bring those back for council to consider, I mean, seeing Adam shaking their head.
I'm, I'm thinking of Swanson, because he had some family members here that objected to that. I don't think anybody else did, I think other folks wanted that, but I know Joe had some objections to doing that. So, I mean, I do think we need to consider that. But whatever, just bring it up as.
I think if he brought it back, we could consider it. I think there was that front part and that back part, there were some different things going on there that I, I certainly, I mean, I'm, I'm open to considering it.
I think, I think his argument was, we were pushing that on him because of what we wanted to do with the property. So, I mean, I just think it's fair to reconsider, to have that conversation again, so.
Well, I'll just, for the, for the record, say, I mean, I think this is great. You know, I, I would tell you that, you know, I would think we need to make it very clear if we do proceed with this from the very, very, very get-go here.
has come up on the property. So, no, that would be to, to really commit the resources, staff resources, to, to put that all together.
Yeah, I, perfect.
I, I'm sure there'd be some conversation about this, too, but I think we made some decisions about design guideline standards for adjacent parcels in that area based on there being a park there, or being used for additional commercial uses. I mean, should we go back and reconsider that as a part of this, if it's not going to be used for what we originally intended, when we put that?
On Veterans.
Yeah, on those additional properties. I mean, I, I think that should be reconsidered as well, as a part of that, if we, if we do this, just to bring it up.
And I think, I think the applicants with those properties could bring those back for council to consider, I mean, I seen Adam shaking their head.
I'm, I'm thinking of Swanson, because he had some family members here that objected to that. I don't think anybody else did, I think other folks wanted that, but I know Joe had some objections to doing that. So, I mean, I do think we need to consider that. But whatever, just bring it up as a.
I think if he brought it back, we can consider it. I think there was that front part and that back part, there were some different things going on there that I, I'd certainly, I mean, I'm, I'm open to considering it.
I think, I think his argument was, we were pushing that on him because of what we wanted to do with the property. So, I mean, I just think it's fair to reconsider, to have that conversation again, so.
Well, I'll just, for the, for the record, say, I mean, I think this is great. You know, I, I would tell you that, you know, I would think we need to make it very clear if we do proceed with this from the very, very, very get-go here. I am not, by saying that I'm committing the resources, I'm not guaranteeing 149 acre park, okay? I'm not promising 149 acre park. I said it.
We're not, we're not committing any resources to do any development, we're just to, to look at the deal.
But you guys know where I'm coming from on that, but I think what this does is clearly open the door for us to have more space, better park space, should be a better overall situation, we'll have walking distance to, you know, an entire community. I, I will say also, though, from a design perspective, that depending on the timing of all this, because we know these things take so much time to get kind of from start to finish, when you start getting market, or engineers involved and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, I think something that would be, depending on what we do with ball fields, or, you know, a school, I would want to try to keep that stuff more on the veterans' parkway side, and the more passive stuff closer over to the neighborhood side, where, you know, because I, you know, I, I would almost even say especially the school, based on, we've all gotten emails about what's going on at Salem, we know what's going on at Bellwood, we know what's going on at all these seagull, where people are pulling through the neighborhood to park, at people's driveways to let their kids run through their yard, get to the school faster. And so we need to make sure, however we, if we do carve out a piece of that 149 acres for that type of a use, that we do that in a way that it is well away from the houses, and that's discouraged, I guess, in a way that would discourage that kind of thing, I would hope. That'd be my input on that from the very get-go here.
Yeah, you know, the sad thing about that is, I like the integration of the schools in the neighborhoods. The problem is, you can't get folks to do the right thing from a behavioral standpoint.
I mean, it's great to be able to walk, and honestly, I would love, I mean, I would think, even while sitting there thinking about it, I mean, clearly, there would need to be a sidewalk to get you from Berkshire to the school, if there's a school there, right? I mean, I, it just doesn't need to be a place that you can get to by car to get to the sidewalk, or, you know, to, just so whatever we can do to discourage that kind of behavior from happening, because you'd have to get pretty entwined back in that neighborhood to make that work. So, anyway, I think it's doable, and I think it's a great idea. I mean, this is kind of, kind of outside the box thinking that, that I think makes a lot of sense, and end up, and end up better, better on both sides, probably, and let, let private sector do the development, and we end up with a better park. Love it.
Do you want to make a motion, or?
I'm, yeah, I, I'll make a motion that we ask the staff to proceed with putting together some, some terms and some, any of the finalizing documents that we'll need.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Hey, I, I want to say one thing, too, I, I talk a lot about that, but I mean, this is one of those things, too, that when you, when you said what you said, it was literally going through my mind right before you said it, from a standpoint of, well, would we have bought that? If that would have been available when we were all going through this, and I was sitting there going, oh, yeah, it's a layup, 100%. But, you know, the other part of that is, what we really struggled with on both the 96 and the other one, was the fact that we're going out there into the outreaches of the, you know, the city, and really going into county property where this is not. I mean, this, this solves about eight of those troublesome things that we're sitting there, beggars can't be choosers. So, anyway, just want to make sure to say it, just to.
All right, you have the authorization of the IDB of Rutherford County to enter into a pilot agreement with General Mills.
This is a request for council to authorize the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County to enter into a pilot agreement with General Mills. Pilot agreements, which stands, it's an acronym for payments in lieu of taxes, are incentive programs that abate certain taxes in return for economic development. This proposal is to incentivize General Mills to invest $65 million in their Murfreesboro plant, 15 of which would be real estate development, and 50 would be personal property. The proposed agreement has no abatement of property taxes, two-year abatement of personal property taxes, and then a one-year partial abatement of property taxes, a 35, not property taxes, I'm sorry, personal property taxes, for abatement of 35% of those for, for one year. So the entire agreement's a three-year time period. The total, total abatement would be $120,000 of personal property tax for an investment of $65 million, which has an estimated economic benefit of $97 million during the, the five-year period of the, the pilot.
How come we're voting, we typically don't ever vote on these, do we?
Well, in the, we, we do if it's large enough, and in the past, the pilot programs have been done without bringing it back to county and authorization, and with, what was, what was stated by the, the chamber was that, you know, if it's below a certain ratio for their economic analysis, that it would be just taken to the IDB. But in, in looking for records, we never found any authorization that was granted to the chamber, which is required by statute. So, short of that authorization to give them, and we didn't develop those in time for this deal to come through, a blanket authorization, then, then pilot should be brought back to council to, to approve.
This one isn't quite as much of a layup for me as the last one. I mean, honestly, I, this kind of caught me off guard a little bit, and for what it's worth, I take a little time to, to look over it and kind of try to understand it a little bit better, just because I, I did, I looked at it earlier today, and I was like, oh, gosh, I don't even know why we're doing it, and what it is, and how it works, and there's no jobs that come from it, and, you know, what kind of understanding, the mindset of, you know.
Yeah. Well, we didn't, we didn't actually participate in a lot of the discussions, and so that, that conversation's been to have with chamber, and I think that'll change in the future. But my understanding is, and what was relayed to us, is that, like a lot of large corporations that have plants that are located in various parts of the country, that the plants themselves have to bid for investments into improving their, their facilities. And so General Mills, like other large corporations, told their plants to, to come up with proposals, and this is one of the proposals, and to, and to incentivize and, and make the proposal that much better internally for General Mills, you know, having the, the tax abatement cost savings in there allows it, them to invest this kind of money into Murfreesboro plant as opposed to a plant in some other location. From a job standpoint, there wasn't indication that there would be any new jobs necessarily that is tied directly to the investment. Obviously, if they modernize the plant, then they have the opportunity to keep producing and maintaining jobs, and perhaps having new jobs. They didn't want to, from my understanding, is they didn't want to commit to new jobs, because that wasn't really part of their proposal, per se, but with the modernization of plant, it's possible that they would have. Their, their average wages over there is above the median wage in the, in the county, so it's a, it's a good proposition, and it's a very small amount for a lot of investment into our community, obviously, and for a very small period of time.
I see that the, I mean, I see the reasons why they would want to do it, for sure, and I see some of the reasons that we can get our investment back. So I understand that we, you know, it looks like we, we would get the investment back rather quickly, and so I, I can appreciate all that. The things that I was thinking in my mind that I'd like to learn a little bit more about is, well, who, who don't we do this for, and who else do we do it for, and how many of these get done without us ever knowing? If, if they're doing smaller ones that we don't authorize, or, you know, those are the things, I guess I'm trying to separate, when somebody calls me and says, well, hey, I want, you know, I'm, I'm going to improve my building, why don't you guys do this for me, for, you know, and, and maybe it's only $3,000, you know, do, where does that line get drawn? I mean, and, and that seems to be something that we don't have very much influence over, so I guess I was just trying to hope that I could understand that a little bit better. If everybody wants, y'all know my deal on this, everybody wants to go ahead and knock this thing out, and now somebody make a motion in a second, I'm probably not going to vote for it tonight, but it's okay, I'm just one guy.
Yeah, I, I would say that there isn't a whole lot of these that have been done in the past, there are a few that, that have been done in the past that we've, we've heard about after, after the IDB has done them. They all, they all meet the, the general criteria of being substantially beneficial from an economic development standpoint in drawing in, and, and generally, either directly doing jobs, or doing some type of investment back in the community that supports the, the job. So, you know, it's, it's not that these haven't been very good programs that the IDB has done, it's to the contrary, I think that they have. It's just that we should be involved, probably to do that, unless we develop a program that allows an authorization that we can, from a legal standpoint, substantiate, which we've just not been able to do.
I can see that.
Can we do this, as we move forward, can we talk to the IBD Board about them keeping us informed on pilot programs? I mean, I think this is a good opportunity. General Mills has invested, and they've grown in the last couple of years, so they have invested into Murfreesboro, and I, I'm good with this one, but as we move forward, can we make sure that when they bring us something like this, we're informed?
Absolutely, and we've, we've had those conversations, generally, they go through, not the IDB, the IB, the IDB picks them up later, the chamber usually has, we've had the conversation with the chamber to make sure that we are informed on the front end, and that we can get authorization from council in a timely manner, and.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I think that's, I mean, I can get along with that, and I, I think one other thing that I would add to it is just kind of, you know, one of the, you know, some of those bigger picture questions, it's not a bad idea on something like this for me, just to make sure, kind of, just showing up on our agenda, too, makes it kind of tough, and I don't know if there's some time crunch, whatever, so I can go along.
Okay. So move.
Motion?
Somebody already seconded?
Second.
Ronnie seconds.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
No.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have the contract approval of administration of the city retirement program. Mr. Wilkerson.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. The employee service department is requesting your approval for the contract with Mission Square, Mission Square to administer the city defined contribution plan. If you recall, earlier this year, we asked that the program be evaluated. We wanted to make sure that the employees were receiving excellent service, and also great investment options. Council then approved our request and to receive competitive bids, proposals. The city received responses from four vendors, we narrowed it down to two. There were three areas that we focused on that influenced our decision. One was the cost of the plan, two was the level of service, and three was the rate of return on the target date investment over the last three to five years. After committee looked at the plans, we decided to move forward with, continue with Mission Square as our investment plan administrator. So we're requesting this evening that you approve, or that we move forward with Mission Square as our retirement plan administrator. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions? Randolph.
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right.
Hold on a second, just in case. I, I intended to do something, I intended to abstain on that, just in case. I don't know who all was involved in the bids, so let me back off my, just in case anybody in my world.
Sure.
Okay. Let me back off my approval and abstain on that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Are you sure?
Well.
Is that?
Yes.
Did, did Rick second the motion? Who seconded that?
It's okay, it's okay to say.
I'll second it.
A second is fine, it, it just brings count, so procedurally, it doesn't really matter.
You got a number.
Yeah, we'll take, just, just remove the second, it's already been voted, so it doesn't matter on the procedural.
Thank you, Rick, you are the weakest link, goodbye. You've been voted off the island. All right, we now have retail liquor certificate of compliance for Big Pigs Wine and Spirit.
This is the certificate of compliance required by state law for a new retail liquor store to be located at 3921 Franklin Road, Suites B, C, and D.
We just need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have the retail liquor certificate of compliance for Gateway Wine and Spirits.
And this is the certificate of compliance for a new retail liquor store to be located at 3119 Medical Center Parkway, Suite A5.
So move. Second.
Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
No.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
Mr. Wright.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, we have the three, three-year Ezra GIS software agreement.
Hello, Mayor, members of council. My name is Gerald Lee, I'm the GIS manager, and the item I have before you is our three-year GIS software renewal with Ezra. Be glad to answer any questions.
I'll move for approval.
Can I say something before we vote?
Yeah.
Mr. Lee, it's nice to see you. I don't think I've ever laid eyes on you, so that's my fault. So, nice to see you. I think this is some of the best money we spend in the city, so I'll second.
Yeah, you do good work.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
I don't know if y'all, if you've ever watched The Wizard of Oz, but, you know, the guy who's behind the curtain, that's Gerald.
I've never seen him before. Yeah, I kind of feel weird.
Gerald, I, I get Gerald sends emails out routinely about GIS being up or down, and, man, all of our people use that nonstop, so thank you for your hard work on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep.
There's a lot of good people that we have here that are very talented, and they, they really make it easy. So, I appreciate your compliment. Let y'all go to lunch, Ronnie.
We got a second, all right.
All right, motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Gerald. All right, you have four beer permits in front of you?
Yep, we have a change in ownership for 1511 East Main Street, and three permits for change in ownership and name for 2535 Medical Center Parkway, 534 Southeast Broad Street, and 1660 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. All of the, the applicants have met the requirements for beer permit. Staff recommends approval upon passing final building and code inspections.
So move. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We don't have any board and commission appointments, any statements?
No, sir.
Any other business from staff?
We'll meet in workshop this Wednesday.
Okay.
And we'll see how the holidays fall.
Okay.
Oh, we do, no, I, I would take that back, we do have public hearings on Thursday following that, so not next, next Thursday, but the week after that, we do have public hearings.
Okay, all right. Christmas tree lighting, downtown Christmas tree lighting tomorrow night.
Tomorrow.
On the square, come see ya. All right, see you, no other business, we'll stand adjourned.